All right, we call the meeting to order on the 3:03 on November 26th. Welcome everyone, glad to have you. Do you roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Stoker.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Present.
Councilmember Connaught.
Present.
Councilmember Haney, absent. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, let's begin with that invitation. Unfortunately, Councilman Haney had a death in his family and he's been unable to attend, so I'm asking Councilman Vazquez to give us an invitation this morning.
He will join me for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we pray that you grant us wisdom and discernment in our decision-making today. We ask that you help us to lead with integrity and a heart for service to our community and all our citizens. Finally, Father God, guide us to be vessels of your peace, spreading harmony, wisdom, and uniting us in love and respect. These things we ask in your holy name, amen.
Amen. All right, we'll begin the meeting with our first agenda item, which is discussing the lease agreement with Permian Basin Archery Association. Vernon, there you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, welcome. Welcome. We have the privilege to be the first. What we have to consider today is discuss amending the lease agreement with the Permian Basin Archery Association. They've contacted us and there's other associations that, archeries, that they'd like to combine. So, as a summary, on August 25th, 2015, City Council approved the resolution to lease 2985 South Dixie Boulevard, Section 47, Block 42, P-2S, Ector County, Odessa, Texas, to buy the Permian Basin Archers Association. So, the Permian Basin Archers Association is requesting the lease to be amended to include West Texas 4H Junior Olympic Archery Development Club, so they can have independent access to the range for the purpose of member practices and competitive events. It's very simple.
Having no background on that, tell us a little bit about that lease. We don't have, has that, have they been consistent with their lease obligations, for example?
Yes, sir. They have met all obligations. There's, it's not too big, they're, the leases are city property, but the other association has the bigger lease, so they just want to be able to participate on both, both areas at each club.
Mr. Jones, have you had an opportunity to review this legal agreement?
No, sir, I have not, not in detail. But today, we, these are already executed leases. We are not, you're not voting today to approve these leases because these have already been approved like in 2015, 2022.
Yes, sir.
So, you would actually be approving a new lease two weeks from now.
Or amended.
Or amended, yes.
May I ask, how many members are participating in this archery?
Yes, but I don't know. I don't know how many members.
Is it worth our time?
Yes.
And the real purpose, it appears the real purpose is adding the youth opportunities to 4H and the, and the Junior Olympic Team, or the Shooting Team. That's, that's really the purpose of the amendment, correct?
Yes, so they can have events. Now, they have a ninety day and it just causes some issues with the language in the agreement.
Any other questions?
Not having seen the agreement, there is a provision, they're providing us with insurance.
Yes.
Well, yeah, that was kind of my question. I don't think any of this changes. You're amending item three and then item four, and it's like they're combining with each other. So, you know, we're discussing the amending. So what's next?
What's next is that they, the, the second agreement that we'll consider, the next line, the next agenda item, is a little bit more where we can get to discuss that, but this is just to begin the discussion, to move forward with it, and to move it on to an agenda item where you will vote. So this is just to let you know, this is something that we're working on, and as we put it on the agenda item, at least you will have a, have a chance to have read it. Dan would have a chance to take a look at it. But it, it was prepared. I mean, it's, it is prepared through the legal department.
What, what is prepared?
The amendment.
So the new lease agreement. So why don't we have that?
The amendment.
Well, we haven't got, we haven't even got that far yet.
Yes.
So it's not prepared.
It is prepared, but it's going to be prepared for the agenda.
Yeah.
So this is, the purpose of this is just to give you a, a heads up of what's coming.
Yeah, hopefully with background.
How far away are we from that?
Two weeks.
Okay, next week. He's always for two weeks.
Yeah, next week. I guess my question is why I, I, this, I would rather have something today to move forward on. I mean, why, because now we're two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. I mean, if we could have the, why wouldn't we have, here, here's the old one, here's the new one proposed, y'all discuss this and put it on council today?
Yes, sir, Councilman. At that point, that's where you can instruct Legal to have it ready for you.
So for two weeks from now, so.
Counsel or work session?
Well, we would put it on council, so you would actually vote on it two weeks from now. So, Mayor, what we're looking for is a consensus to go forward.
Right. I think what Craig is basically articulating is if we, if we had the new lease to look at, it'd be sort of easier to sort of see what we're doing, if anything. It's just one of those things, put it in our heads, be kind of proactive, have stuff ready.
Because I guess that's, what's the point? Why, why is this on the agenda today?
So we could move forward with it.
Move forward with what?
To put it on the agenda. Nothing happens today.
On whose agenda?
On, on your agenda, on the city's agenda.
Council?
Yes. Not this, not this coming, but.
But why would we put this on the council agenda? This is an old lease agreement. We are amending and updating it, correct?
Correct.
And so if you come to council, what will that item be? The amended and updated agreement?
Yes.
So why wouldn't we be discussing that today?
Because it's not on the agenda. This is just consensus to move forward.
I think what we're talking about is, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
But the, to be for, we have to go today to get it on the agenda of two weeks from now. So it has to be today. Now, you're, are you, are you recommending or suggesting?
I'm recommending that if you're bringing us a lease agreement to update and discuss, that we have the updated lease agreement to discuss. That work session, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Councilman.
Because now, now we, okay, that's great that we brought this up today. It's an old agreement, everybody knows what's on it. Hey, we're going to amend it, but now we've got to wait two weeks.
Two weeks.
To read it, and then we've got to wait two weeks to vote.
No, sir, but at this point, we could.
But I don't want to, why, why?
Do you want to get hurt? Correct, I hear you. I think that's a good question. I mean, realize we have at least three brand-new councilmen slash mayor. Perhaps in the future, it might be better that if, I guess the question becomes, are you telling me that we need to sort of approve that, do y'all move forward? Then if so, maybe we bring it up two minutes in advance to have that discussion of whether or not we should move forward, and then so the next one, we have it in the work session, then for vote the next. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, sir, Mayor, so.
It may not be practical, but does it make sense?
Yes, sir, so what we could do for, for this and the following item is that we'll put it back on work session. There's no sense of urgency to get this done. I mean, there's, nothing's going to happen, so.
Right.
We'll, we'll put it back on, we'll attach the amendment, the amended.
And I don't believe Legal has been told what the amendments are going to be yet, what, what we should amend, so.
Is that not this?
Yes, so.
So the amendment is not to add whatever this email is. Please add Permian Basin Archery Association to the Ector County 4H JOAD lease, and they may be added to our lease. Please call me with any questions. And then today, I get this agenda item that says discuss amending the lease with Permian Basin Archery Association in this summary. So again, I'm confused where, so you don't know what the update is?
It hasn't come, it hasn't come to Legal yet.
Why?
It has gone to Legal. Tina's been working on it.
Okay, who, who's on first here? Because.
But I think the best.
From a procedural perspective, I guess we're trying to figure out, should it come, if we need to say we approve it, then we all think it's a good idea. I don't think, I've heard anyone say it's not a great idea, so I think everyone agrees, great idea, right?
Yes, sir.
So if we need that first, that's fine, but then probably from a, from a common sense perspective, maybe we need to have something like this on an agenda, work session agenda, then have, make sure Legal has it prepared for the next workshop agenda, so then when it's put on the vote agenda, we've already had a chance to digest the new contract. Does that make sense to everybody? I mean, I'm just trying to get us all on the same page.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and I, I, I'll take the direction, and we'll move forward, and this is something that, as we were instructed by Legal to proceed with this, so.
So who, okay, you say that, who at Legal's instructing you?
We were instructed to move forward and not present the agenda, I mean, the amended, yet, until we get ready to approve it.
Why?
It's probably out of order, but can you come on up and give us a quick, we're all trying to learn and be effective, be effective, we just want to make sure we understand.
Here's an easy one, this is an easy one.
Yes, sir.
This is not obliging us to.
Procedure, procedurally, what the council had us do was bring me something to say, this is what we'd like to do, can we go forward? They would say yes, then we would prepare it and come in. We, the council did not want us just jumping in and doing things without consensus to move forward, that's what they had given us, so.
Well, you got new sheriff down.
Exactly, so with the new, we'd be happy, let us know how you guys want us to do this, and we will have.
And that's what we need to work to do, we different, we all learning.
Yes, sir.
We need to get everybody how we want, Mayor, you know, up to the two weeks, you know, I think they're still working off that whole program.
If it makes sense to everyone, I think here's what we want to, want to see this council, is that if we need to see if it's a good idea before moving forward, great, let's put it on it, work session agenda, but then before we really can see it, once we said it, hey, that's a great idea, we love, I love children, I love shooting sports, I think it's great. Probably though, for the next, it'd be in the work session with the amended contract, so we can digest it, so then, two weeks, we can vote on it. Is that, does that sound good to everyone?
That sounds good. Going forward, that's a great idea. They can certainly do that.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, okay.
What that does in reality, Cal, is keeps us from having to read so many agreements at, at one time, which would be two weeks from now, that, because our packets are already this thick, and you've got all the agreements to read, it gets tough to get through them, so that does give us an extra, some extra time to get through some of those agreements, so.
Yes, sir.
And from a time-saving standpoint, I mean, I don't, again, I don't get it, because now we're making them wait two weeks, two weeks, two weeks.
If I understand right, you make sure it's worth, that we're actually in agreement to do it before you waste all the time to draft it, right? I think that's what we're asking Craig, just, are we all in agreement to do it? And if we are, we'll go the next step.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Mayor, it appears, it appears to me that they're just trying to get consensus to add these two clubs. They don't want to go ahead and write all the law to it, you know, do we want to add these two clubs? That's simply the question, but I do have an additional question, and this is just a work question, and I pretty much know my own answer, but since we're adding clubs, there's competition over those fields. Parks and Recreation is doing the scheduling, I'm presuming, for all the groups?
No, no, this is, these are independent.
It might be different.
Yes, they, they have nothing to do with the city, these are independent clubs. Besides using a.
That's city property.
Yes.
Now, so there's a piece of land that they built a, maybe a building on, and they have targets set up, and so they sort of run their own shooting range.
Yes, so, and they hold competitions and so forth, so. Yes, so we will move forward with the new direction for, for Mayor and Council, it's no problem. We will proceed in that fashion, so if, item number four will be the same thing, if you would like to move forward.
I think so, I think we all, I mean, does anyone not agree it's a great idea?
It's a great idea.
I think we're all, 100% are behind it, make it happen.
So on the next work session, we'll put it back on, we'll put both of these back on, and we'll have Legals amend the amendment.
Fantastic, thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
And bear with us, it's our first meeting, we haven't seen it. You know, sometimes seeing the sausage made is a little different than just eating it after dinner, right? So bear with us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're going to move to item five, which is the discussion insurance program, and Yvette, is she here?
There you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So I wanted to talk with you all about our changes that we made for the upcoming year, benefits year, and the reason I am wanting to discuss it here in work session is because I had a couple retirees come to me and didn't, didn't quite agree with some of the changes that we made that have already been approved, but I did want to bring them in. So I'm just going to step you through what we've done.
Absolutely.
So, we went from being self-administered, meaning that we process our own claims in-house, and now we have contracted with Blue Cross Blue Shield to be our TPA, our third-party administrator, they will now do that. As a result of that, we've made a number of changes to the plan. One is that we added copays that used to be subject to the deductible. We added vision and hearing exams, as I said, Blue Cross Blue Shield is now the third-party administrator. We expanded our network because we were really challenged, people didn't have access to care, proper care. We've included telemedicine, and instead of the clinic that we had, that was across the street from our building, we've now contracted with MCH and to provide those clinic services. Here's what changed for the retirees. So they're right now allowed to participate in medical, dental, RX if they're under 65, the clinical services as we talked about in life, and then we've added telemedicine. So we're switching from us doing those claims in-house and managing the billing, we're sending the billing to WEX, which will actually bill the retiree, collect the money, and send the money back to us. Our RX is now switching from CBS Caremark to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we've talked about the clinic services and our life insurance stay the same. This is just a summary of the benefits that we are offering, which are much, much improved from what we had in place before. There were a lot of inconsistencies in how benefits were played, paid, and our employees and retirees certainly felt that. We've talked about that we added telemedicine and clinic services, and our pharmacy, Blue Cross Blue Shield, offers kind of a three-tier model for the pharmacy benefits and, including mail order, and so we've added also pharmacy, a pharmacy advocate program to help people manage their number of prescriptions that they may have. So now here is where we get into a little bit of the more detail that the retirees were questioning. So the way that the plan was structured in terms of premiums, it was scheduled for retirees with primary coverage or retirees without primary coverage, okay? So if they have primary, if we're not the primary carrier for them, that means that they have coverage somewhere else that makes it primary. So for the under 65 folks, we allow them to participate paying in the, underpaying in the, if they have secondary, I mean, primary coverage, we allow them to participate to make a lower payment than the rest of the retirees, because they have primary coverage elsewhere. As a part of the cleanup of the plan, because there were a number of things that we needed to clean up, that was one of the things that we changed, that, that population, that group of under 65 would pay the same rate as everybody else in that group. We also allowed, if they have, if they had other coverage or secondary coverage, we, we waived the deductible as well. So we cleaned up a number of things in the plan, so that when we went into 120, into 2025, that we would be able to, you know, sustain the plan and really know how it's supposed to work. So here, here's where we're challenged, that, so 70% of Americans today retire before they're eligible for Medicare, that means before they're 65, but there's not many companies that offer health insurance to retirees, and you can guess why, because it's pretty costly, right? Our spend for medical insurance today hits us well above, probably close to 12, $12 million per year. What's not on there, what's not included in that 2024 budget, is the systems that we run, the platforms that we have, have in place in order to be able to manage the claims and process claims. When we came before the council requesting to be able to overhaul the benefits, we said that we would try very hard to stay within the current budget that we have, and we're working really hard to stay towards that. We know that we'll have ancillary claims in the next year, so, but we've tried to account for all of that. So today, these are the rates that retirees pay. These rates have not changed since 2018. We adjusted the rates going into the new year, and this gives you an idea of the claims that we pay for retirees under 65 and over 65, and it gives you the count for each year. Our retirees make up 35% of our claims, and so we're, here's the challenge, the question that we got asked, is we have 28 under 65 retirees who have coverage elsewhere and were secondary, and they have been paying a lower premium. So now what we've said is, we're no longer going to offer that to you, because it's not common or typical anyway, that you have to pay the same rates as everybody else. The second issue that we have is around retirees coming on and off the plan. We don't allow it, and it hasn't been allowed for retirees to, if they leave the plan, to come back on the plan. But some retirees told me that they were told at the time that they retired, that they could add their spouse later. These, both of these things bring challenges to the plan, because one of the things we've tried to do is, as I said, we tried to clean up all of those exceptions that were being made on the plan throughout many, many years, and to modernize the plan. So I just wanted to make you all aware, just in case a retiree corners you and says, now I have to pay more, that's why. So I wanted to see if you had any questions for me, if you wanted to talk about anything related to this change that was already approved in September.
If a retire, if a retiree gets off, you're saying they can't get back on. Can they wait a year and get back on, you know, like sometimes you have to wait till it's time to sign up for insurance. Once they off, they off.
Right.
Don't get back on at all.
Because we take on more of a liability once we let someone back onto the plan, if they've gone away, and a lot of times when people want insurance, it's because they really need it, unfortunately.
So that's the only reason they're going to get back on, because there's something going on. That's what, that's what new council needs to understand about our plan, it's not those premiums, it's that $12 million to spend, claims, 35% retirees do the quick math, so 35% of the people account for roughly for, a little over $4 million worth of spend that we have to cover.
Exactly.
Because we're self-funded up to $400,000 per claim.
And our premiums are still fairly low.
We were trying to get competitive with the old pass.
If you were to look at the city of Dallas, for example, for their retirees under 65, that retiree-only premium is somewhere in the neighborhood of $900 to $1,000. We're only charging $400, allowing folks to bring their spouses or whatever on the plan, a lot of plans, particularly employers, charge a surcharge, we don't do that. So we really try to make sure that we're offering benefits of value, but we also have to monitor the cost and to be able to sustain the plan in the future.
Do we have any type of, I remember saying it's already been passed, correct?
Yes.
Do we have any type, or have we, do you have a plan to have any type of, I call it a town hall, some, somebody educate people as to what the changes are, what to expect, because I've got some negative feedback. Nobody likes change, okay?
Yeah, nobody likes change.
I don't like it, you don't like it.
Yes, we did a number of meetings, outreach to retirees, made ourselves available to them, and this population that we're talking about that's being allowed is, is 28 people.
It's just, it's one of those things, Cal, that you got to, nobody, nobody does what we're doing, and we don't have to do that to be competitive, one way or the other. The other things that we've done, the pharmacy, the telemedicine, all of those things we've added are much more beneficial than what we're talking about here. This is one of those things where, when you're, you administer your own claims, which, you know, I was around with Mr. Wells, put that in and encouraged him, as hard as I could not to do that, because what happens is, is what she's saying, in the old town, I'll let you get your iPhone after a year. Oh, hell, nah, I'm not going to let you do that, I don't like you. So that's what happens, you get personalities involved, people do favors for people, not saying that they did, but it's just human nature. So you got to make it strict, hard, fast, and the worst thing you can do, and I suggest our claims cost will go down with a new third-party, with an independent third-party administrator attu-tating those claims.
Exactly.
And making sure they get paid properly.
Exactly, because we can feel comfortable that the same claim will be paid out the same week each time.
No matter who you are.
And that's not necessarily happening, so we found a lot of, because this plan has been in place 20 years, and they've been adding on and adding on different features just as needed, right? And so as a result of that, we're here in this place where we needed to make the big change, the big leap.
So everything's been communicated, so everybody knows, the head, Gallagher was here, the consultant was here, and all the Yvette staff, then went to every department, fielded questions, did enrollments, so everybody's been well-informed about what's going on. We're trying to, we are trying, one of the things we did discuss in the committee, I'm sorry, I was on the committee, but we discussed better communications to make sure people know.
Yes.
Trying to make sure they know what they can and can't use, because we want them to use telemedicine, we want them to use mail order drugs. Those things save us money.
And we absolutely have work to do on our end with regard to communication, particularly before people actually walk out the door. We want to be proactive about that communication, so people understand what that cost will mean to them as they leave the organization. So sure, we have a lot of work to do around communication.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to publicly compliment Ms. Griffin for the work that she's done on this benefits program. I'll tell you, I've seen the difference, and it's, we're heading in the right direction, so I want to commend her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And her staff.
We had a good team working with the committee, and so Councilman Thompson was a part of that committee, so we tried to make sure that we were talking to employees in advance, that we talked to retirees in advance, we did a number of focus groups, we did surveys, we tried to make sure that we talked to, talk with everyone to kind of hear their concerns before we even put it into paper for the design.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, it surprises me, OFR and OPD, or anyone out of town that results in an injury, it's a kind, you don't have out-of-town insurance for these hospitals and clinics. Today, we have national coverage.
Yes.
And to me, that is huge.
Yeah.
It's significant. Yeah, we were having these individual case agreements. If you want to go to MD Anderson, we had to call MD Anderson and negotiate a price. Guess what, it wasn't very good. We don't have to do that anymore.
Yes.
You know, we've got Blue Crosses and that works nationwide, so it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter where any of our guys go or ladies.
When they pull out their cards, it's recognizable, and we do not care what is what's happening today.
Yeah, big change.
Thank you for keeping us posted. Thank you for keeping us posted, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item number six, some of the new, council and myself, just asked for some, we'll meet each department, one by one, just get to know everybody, y'all know us, if, determine if there's problems or issues we can address, and so, one of the ones we started with was finance. Kaylee, I'm gonna call you to the front and just give us, I'm gonna call it the thirty-thousand-foot view, just kinda give us an overview of where you are, challenges, problems, what, what we could do to help the situation, and we may have questions for you.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Very excited to be with you all here, welcome to the DIAS.
Thank you.
So, for formality's sake, all of you know me already, but my name's Kaylee Bunga, I'm the Finance Director here for this wonderful city. In alignment with your request for kind of a thirty-foot view, this is what I have put together for you today. We will talk about our core functions of the Finance Department, our department overview, a little capture of our external revenue sources, a timeline of events, kind of since my time here as the Finance Director, funds available to spend, as I know that has been a big topic of conversation, where we are today, and our current objectives, and where we wanna grow in the future. And then you'll also, also hear from our Direct Road Internal Audit and Financial Compliance, Kayla Hardy, who works very closely with the Finance Department. So as Finance, we are responsible primarily for many things, but the underlying purpose of everything we do is we are responsible for the prudent usage of our taxpayer dollars, everything that comes in, and everything that goes out. So we do that by way of our core functions. We have accounting, audit, budget, payroll, investments, and accounts payable. I actually have my Finance Team here on the first three roads, y'all give a little wave. Wonderful group of people, hard workers through and through. As a department, we really pride ourselves on hard work and positive work culture, so if you're ever in City Hall, come by second floor and give us a visit. You'll also find the Purchasing Department on the second floor, which operates independently, but very closely with Finance, so you'll find that team on second floor as well. This is our current organizational chart. We are a small but mighty team. There's about eleven of us on staff currently. We have myself, we have our Senior Administrative Assistant, we have Budget Manager, Controller, and Payroll Supervisor, and they oversee their respective departments. So we are very busy, we have a lot to do all the time, and we work very well together, so we're proud of them for that. One of the things that I wanted you guys to see, especially for those of you who are new to the DIAS, is just a brief understanding of what it is that we are working with. So this is from our current budget, which is available online for all of the public to see, but you'll see that our biggest source of revenue for the city comes from our Water and Sewer Department. The second biggest would be property tax, and then we have sales tax. And then that other is a very large category, but that's a compilation of internal revenues that go between departments, of course, our Water, Solid Waste, is also up there at six point two percent, so. This is what we're working with, very simplified on this pie chart, but it is a significant amount of money that we are responsible for using. Okay, so my arrival here at the city was approximately October, November of twenty twenty-three. I thought it would be a good idea to show you guys a timeline of what has unfolded since then. So I start here in fiscal year twenty-two. As you know, our fiscal year runs from October one to September thirty. So at this point in time, we're on a brand-new ERP system, which is basically our, our operational platform that we use for accounting, basically everything we do in finance goes through our Tyler Munus platform. Our Building and Collection Department also utilizes a Tyler Munus platform. So we're operating on a brand-new platform, which means our directors are having to learn how to use the platform, they're having to learn how to pull reports that are different from the way that they were used to doing it when we were in Napoline, our previous system. So that presented some challenges in the very beginning, when it comes specifically to the twenty twenty-two audit. So, in October twenty twenty-three, we start with a more current timeline. The Finance Department had just undergone a significant, a significant amount of turnover. So several positions were vacated, kind of starting January on through September, several very key positions. And so at the start of our fiscal year, we did not even have our budgets uploaded in the system for our departments to use. So that was something we had to correct right away. Our bank reconciliations, which are, you can't do an audit without bank reconciliations, were several months behind. Like I said, a number of vacancies were filled, including myself, our Controller, Matthew McKee, and our Budget Manager, Monica Williams. At this point in time, our twenty twenty-two audit is six months behind the due date. Our audits are due March thirty-first every year. Our twenty twenty-two books had not been closed, because we were still working on audit. And at this point in time, in a standard fiscal year, October is when we should be looking at starting to close the year we just came out of. But because we didn't have the staffing, the resources, none of that was happening at this point in time. One of the things that the city elected to do was bring on a Budget Consultant and a Financial Consultant to help us kind of climb out of the hole that we had found ourselves in. They're still on, on call today, so we do call them in and have them help us with, you know, whatever it is we're needing. If you'll have any questions, just, you know, stop. So then, October through December period, lots of new in these leadership roles. We're meeting with departments who also have a lot of new leadership, new directors. So we're meeting with them, we're helping them to, one, understand the systems that they're using. We are helping them to understand how their departments operate from a financial perspective, those types of things. And we begin familiarizing ourselves with the portion of the twenty twenty-two audit that had been completed. It had been started by a previous finance staff. The trouble we had in, in this review of the data was that much of the data had no identifiable source, so like a lot of it was just hand keyed from something that someone was looking at, so we had to dive in, into the weeds very deep to try to figure out where these numbers were coming from, and we're now responsible for assuring they're correct. So we had to make sure that we knew exactly where everything was coming from. So moving on to January through March twenty-four, our Budget Department is busy conducting the reviews of ongoing projects, and that consists of having meetings with the Department Directors, understanding what, what funds they are needing for their large projects to continue to roll into their current budgets. And of course, we're still continuing to work with the audit firm on the audit, gaining a lot of progress, getting them any further information that they needed. Moving on, April to July, so April to July is our budget season, is when the budget compilation starts, so we have a lot of meetings with departments to help them formalize their budgets, discuss new year projects. This was the second year that we implemented zero-based budgeting, so with all the new directors, we had to kind of help them understand what that was, why it was, why it was beneficial, things like that. The final stages of the twenty twenty-two audit are occurring at this point in time, and we are submitting our twenty twenty-four budget book to the Government Finance Officers' Association, which we do annually. Come to July, we have our council retreat for the budget, which some of you attended that this year. And then we also have the completion of our twenty twenty-two audit, single audit in Actur, which is our, our financial report, is basically the audit, but with a little bit more data. August through September, now that we have our twenty twenty-two audit done, we can make those final adjustments that the auditors are recommending to us in our financial platform and close the books. We call it a hard close. At this point in time, we commence the soft closing of twenty twenty-three, which is traditionally done in those first couple months, right after the fiscal year ends. And the team that we had doing this, I mean, I cannot brag on them enough, we stayed hours and hours and hours past the normal eight to five to really speed this process along. At this point in time, we also engaged Weaver for our twenty twenty-three audit. We also include our Director of Internal Audit and Financial Compliance in this, because as you'll hear from her, no, but she's got fifteen years of relevant experience in audit, government, and grants and things like that, so she was an excellent resource to bring in to help facilitate the process for the twenty-three audit. And at this point, we're also starting our weekly progress checks with Weaver, so once a week we check in, where are we, do you need anything from us, has anything slipped through the cracks, do you need any clarification? If we don't talk with them on things every week, it's because they're here in-house conducting their, their audit, so we're in constant communication with them. October twenty twenty-four, we begin the process for fiscal year twenty twenty-four soft closing, so similar to how I said we're supposed to be doing that within the first couple months, while we're directing ourselves on the right path and getting some of these things done now in preparation for the twenty-four audit. We also conducted an analysis of fund balances available for various projects across the city. I do plan on bringing that to you guys in further detail in another work session, but this is kind of a high-level overview of what we have preliminarily determined that is available. I just chose to highlight our Water and Sewer and General Fund, because those are the funds with the most activity, right? Those are gonna be the ones where you have all your very large projects, and so I thought that would be better to put here. And once again, I'll bring you a more in-depth presentation in a future work session, if that's what you'd like to see. Our rating agencies recommended that we keep six months in our Water Sewer Fund, as far as a fund reserve balance goes, so we thought it would be a conservative approach to just do six months in the Water Sewer and in the General Fund. So what we have here is taking out the reserves that we are mandated to keep, taking out the six months that we would like to see. On the far right column, we have about thirty-two million dollars in the General Fund that we can spend on some projects. And then in the Water Sewer, we have about twenty-three million that we have available to spend. So again, very high-level preliminary, but our intent is to run this calculation annually around this time, so that we can begin to communicate with the departments, okay, what projects do you have that are going to need funding, kind of work through that, so by the time you get to the April, April through July budget process, we've already done that footwork, and we can say, okay, let's get these on the books. So this is where we are today. Our twenty twenty-three audit, which is ongoing, we chatted with our auditor due to some limited staffing availability that our auditor is facing. They're looking at an estimated completion in February twenty twenty-three. We did get a chance to meet with Councilman Stoker on Friday and our auditor, I appreciate you reaching out. So that we could all be on the same page about what it is that our auditor is needing from us at this point. Largely, all of the pieces of information that are required from us have gone to them, they just need time to do their work. And so we're readily available, any questions that may come up or clarifications they need, but they're just, they're doing their work, and they've been a great audit firm and partner for us. We really love our partners over at Weaver. For our twenty twenty-four audit plan, the staff, of course, now that we've got over a year under our belts, or almost a year rather, we're better equipped with the knowledge of our city's operations, so that naturally we'll just promote a smoother process. We would like for council to consider allowing us to extend our contract with Weaver for one more year. Bringing in a new auditor presents challenges normally in a normal situation, just because they are learning you, so it takes more time to ask those questions, to familiarize themselves with our operations. And so, you know, in conversations with, with our auditor, if we were to stay with Weaver, they think that we can get a twenty twenty-four audit out by June of twenty twenty-five, so remember they're due in March, but they're thinking they could get one out in June of twenty-five. And it is actually in alignment with when the city usually files. According to Weaver, we always file in June. I'm, moving forward, I would like to not have late audits, I would like to file them in, you know, March when they're due or before. But yes.
Do you prefer us to stop you now, or wait till you're finished?
Whenever.
So, I'm not allowed to have a problem with this audit deal, okay? I'm not, I'm frustrated, because you just, I think we all can agree, the city charter requires it done by March of the year.
Correct.
And obviously, we were twenty-two months, I think, late in filing twenty-two, and we're gonna be at least eleven months late, late, not, I mean, late, past the due date on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and now you're telling me we're gonna be late on the twenty-four, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, right?
On the audit?
Yes. Because due in March, you're saying it's not gonna be done until June.
Correct. And so, this is in alignment with when we usually file. So from Weaver's perspective, it was nothing out of the ordinary when they suggested it to us. We're going to press them to get it done faster than that, just know that. None of us want a late audit.
Right. So what can we do that, I'm asking, if, if, if there's no, if you had no limitations, what, how do we get the twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
I'll talk about it a little bit more in depth, but I assigned her to these big projects in order for there to only be one person that they're gonna be communicating to here. Doesn't matter if, if the problem is with engineering, doesn't matter if it's with utilities or if it's with planning, they're gonna have one contact that they can go and she's a liaison for us in order to be able to get things more expedited. Okay, so we kind of already talked about planning, what we do, so what we, in the department, what we tend to do on a daily basis is we look at land use and zoning, development review, annexation subdivisions, permitting, community engagement, and long-term planning. In current planning, this is Maria's team, and here she only has one planner, one Cedar Planner, and one tech right now. So, they're looking at annexations, annexations are big thing coming right now, I think before preparing for the big boom that's, might be coming. So we're starting to see a lot of annexations, and it's not just an acre or two, we're talking about nine hundred acres, seven hundred, so it's, it's a good amount of land that's coming inside city limits. And we have our challenges with that, because some of it is in Actur County, some of it is in Midland County. Actur County, there's certain regulations, we have an MU with them, so we have to follow certain procedures with that, which our Assistant City Manager is helping us be more proactive, and we're actually trying to use DocuSign in order to expedite the process, and our legal team is also helping us with that. So we do zoning, and we have PDS, those are more for the big projects. We have our subdivision planning, specific use permits, variance, master, master sign plans, and our site plans. This is just some quick up-to-date of how, just so you guys know how many projects we're kind of seeing on a daily basis. Like I said, this is a team of four people that are managing all of this. I wanna talk about the last one, which is the pre-development meeting. The pre-development meeting is this every Wednesday, we have around six, and certainly we have more, it depends on if people want to come. We really encourage this, and we really hope that you can help us promote this. This is where anybody that wants to, you know, buy a house, wants to do a master plan, or wants to expand their business, they come to us, and we go over all of our, like, we review their plans, and we'll have fire, we'll have utilities, we'll have engineering, public work, so everybody that we interact with in the aspect of construction in there. So we try to go over all the projects and all the challenges. So we try to go over all the projects and all the challenges that they might have during this phase before they invest any money. And this is very crucial for them to come to. So because we were allowing for half an hour only, we're now gonna cut it down to um four meetings per Wednesday and go forty-five minutes, it's just so we can't get through them. But what that means is that we might have to open it up for other days, we're thinking maybe Fridays, in order to get the overflow. Do you guys have any questions so far? So I was mentioning that we have um boards that we, the current planning tends to work with a lot. So we have a historical preservation board, however, we have never met in the one year and seven months that I have been here. Uh that doesn't mean that we might not have somebody, but I will encourage that we need to update this list and I need new people just in case we have anything. Then we have our zoning board of adjustments. We have our planning and zoning commissioners and we have city officials. So um they all have different deadlines. Um I am missing a lot of people here. You have this experience with me, and where I don't meet quorum. If I don't meet quorum, I have a big problem because of the third day shot clock. So that means that and I have to get very creative. Uh we have to make calls in order to ask them, can you please withdraw your application or also have them, I, it automatically gets approved. Engineer will get mad at me because sometimes they have drainage issues that they, you know, cannot, and I go, I can't, they're like, we can't approve this and I can't do anything about it. So that's the one challenge, and I would love if I can get all the positions full there and get my alternatives as well and really have people that are
That's what I was gonna say, you have two alternates that haven't been filled ever on P and Z.
Um sorry, I talk too much. So um so that that's the issue with that. So now let's go to our strategic plan. Remember how I was telling you guys that when I got here, divided the the planning division into two? So here we're looking more at the long range, we're looking at the future of the city. Something that we have never done is that we have not looked at the E T J. When we do our comp plan, we have never looked of what that's gonna look. How that transition between the five miles between the city and the E T J is going to be. And it's very important, as you guys can see right now, we're starting to annex into it, so it does affect us. It does affect us that the roads are not to to the standards. You guys have all heard and all I've heard it, that we don't wanna be like West Odessa, right? There's no rules or regulations that we cannot annex them in, even if we want to, just because they're not gonna meet any kinds of standards when we annex them in, even though we would love to, we just can't do it because it's, it would cost the city a lot of money in order to just get it, right? So that's one of the projects that we're gonna be working on, and I'll move on to. Um so cur, we have um completed our carport ordinance, our alcohol ordinance and our development process guide. That one you will see next year. Um we got put into, every, the whole city has to be going onto M G O, which is my government online. It's a system for all of us to be able to work together. Um my team, which is Marlena and Jeff Fisher, have been leading this. We're not I T experts, but we try to do our best. What we are good at is mapping and understanding process. I have two of the best people that understand this and honestly, they've been doing everything on their own. Um and they've been helping all of the departments. We are actually one of the um speakers this year uh with um building, you know, equipment services. I think they were able to go live in three weeks, oh, they left, uh in three weeks. We broke records. Um and that was a lot about what Chris Adams did, was that he said, forget all of the data. Let's start fresh and put in the correct data into the system, instead of bringing old data that is incorrect, let's just do it this way. So we were able to quickly get them up and running and it's really successful with it. There's some other departments and we've had hiccups and we've had to reassess, but they were our guinea pigs, like I said, we're not I T, so. Um so here are some of the current projects that we're working on. I was very fortunate that the council believed in what we were doing and understood how important it was in order for us to be very progressive and keep up with our times. So we were one of the few departments that probably didn't get our budget cut. You may have heard that my budget was extremely high. You're, it's a hundred percent correct, but that's because, remember, for forty years, they did nothing. So that means I have forty years and I need to catch up. So here are just some of the ordinances that we're working on, we have the landscaping subdivision, our sign ordinance. Um we're also creating a housing uh gap report. Uh I really wanna bring different kinds of typologies, this is very important for when we go into our comprehensive plan. Um we're also, because of the struggles that we had with uh projects not coming through us, we are being more proactive and we're working with the different departments when they have a big project. Such as the police parking garage and the uh cover parking for a report. Um I think we're gonna, for the parking police garage, I think we have sufficient money in order to get the the construction drawings done. But we don't want that to just sit there, and those drawings won't be good for two, three years. And so as of right now, this is, we don't have the funding in order to build this structure. It's something that we will have to work on in order to be able to, you know, get it funded and get it built. I don't want it to just sit there, uh then we're wasting money or we're wasting time. Um so we're also working with uh other entities. We're trying to partner up and help uh our council to be able to apply for the culture art district. Uh I know we're we're gonna be the first ones to get it here in West Texas, he does a fantastic job. So um we should be able to, our goal is to apply next year. Um we wanna do uh alley projects, which is renovating alleys to create a different uh network system for walkability and make it safer for our citizens to walk and not have to always be on the street, especially when we have parades and stuff. It's, would be an easy way for us to convert the alleys into the walking space and not have to close down the whole city, especially because we have a hard time with Texas of being able to close ramps. Um we have a goal or a vision of improving and updating our park. Um we're currently right now working on the Start Bright Casita Village. The comp plan, I do wanna talk that that's a three-year process. The the goal for this year is to actually go out and do the R and Q for it. And we did budget it in our three, our five-year plan in order for it to be put into place. And it's a great time because you all will help me get through all of this and have your new vision for what the city will be. Okay, so now I'm trying to go fast, sorry. So our building inspection, so our building inspection department, it's it it's made to enforce building codes. Priority is safety, and we work it hand-in-hand with our fire department here. Um so what we do is we review plans, commercial, industrial, residential. Um I wanna say that I only have one client examiner and one residential and one commercial. Uh and they do a fantastic job. Um then we review permits, our tuition permits, and then we conduct all of the inspections. Um and then we also inspect unsafe buildings as well. So if a car drives into a building, our building division has to go go on site, so he's always on call. Okay, so here are some numbers that I wanted to show you guys, just to kind of understand what the department's going through. So just for right now, this year, my residential permit is at over ten thousand, again, one client examiner. My commercial permit is almost at fifteen hundred. And then my inspections is uh twenty-eight thousand. Okay, I've only had five inspectors, right now I have seven. I need to be fully staffed now. Um remember how I was telling you guys that I was trying to create project managers? These are my projects that we're kind of testing them out. Um we are, with Bass Pro, Marlena was able to review the permit within a week. The whole set. Um and then with Urban Air, we've also have broken ground on everything. Uh we're trying to open early and we were, we were on time, they had a minor incident and um they had to push the dates, but we kept on time with everything, so it has not been from the city that they've had any kinds of delays. I have people checking on them, I do personal walkthroughs to the facilities as well, at least once a month just to make sure that they know that we're there, we're here to help. I would love to be able to, yes.
What's the physical location of Urban Air Amusement?
It's gonna be in the, in the mall.
In the mall?
Where the movie theater used to be.
Okay.
And that was another one that with uh Retail Coach, we we all worked together in order to find the locations. We might have the resources and we can find, but it also makes a big difference when we have the the developers that are wanting to work with us and wanting to help, so we have different areas. They could have done a whole buildup, new construction. But she really wanted to start, we wanna see the mall transition into some more modern era. And so this is the start, this was the start that we're trying to get there. Um we have to try. Um and so with the housing, you're, with both uh B M O and D R Horton, you're gonna start seeing a different housing typology. I think in probably four weeks, we'll present the the new housing that they're trying to bring, their cottage. So it's, for us, it's not new, it's what they've been doing in in Dallas and Houston. But I wanna see more vertical, I wanna see more two, three stories. Um and we're really close with getting those to start coming our way as well.
What what's in our way of doing that?
I mean, people don't wanna
So we don't have any, any type of ordinance on the books that prevents it? We don't have any thing that
No, but we can encourage it more. When we create our, for, let's take downtown, and let's say that we create a design type, we can
We have one.
We do, but it doesn't tell you, first floor has to be certain percentage of retail, second floor has to be housing. It doesn't give you that option. They just might say
Because we also have buildings that need to be knocked down.
Yes.
So, I mean, we're not, we're not enforcing the things we've got, and that
Correct.
Downtown overlay districts has never been enforced. So again, I I, we got a lot of stuff there, but yeah, I just wanna make sure that, you know, if if they wanna come in and build something that we don't have something on the books that, you know, multifamily or, you know, can you build townhomes in Odessa?
You can.
Can you build
So last
Twenty-story condo town.
Remember how we had the P D?
I mean, let's make sure they can do this stuff.
They can. Um so
You know, I really think we need to have a meeting with you. Cause I got a lot of questions.
That's why I said Alex is gonna be able to do his, I knew Liz wouldn't.
Sorry, I'm trying to go really fast.
I know, I'm not asking you any questions.
Okay, so, but we can, so fine development districts allows you to be able to do that, that's the beauty of it.
Yeah.
So it's more of the developer. We do need to find more uh ways of helping. Um I think partnering up more with O D C, I I'm right now talking a lot with Mr. Tom Mansky. Um we need a grant writer, we need somebody that's gonna help us go out for those grants in order for us to be able to help and assist.
There are all sorts of different things we can do, and I keep talking about the neighborhood opportunity zones and you know, it it can't all be new, Beadbo, like, God bless Larry Bell, but uh we need some housing in District One.
And I'm saying I had calls this morning, but we need to talk to you, cause I have individual guys that are already building homes in District One, outside. And we're not getting something back.
Yeah, well, you know, and that stuff, the the city gets in the way because they will bend over backwards to make sure Beadbo has sewer and water, but, you know. D one, they're having trouble, they've got a, the the developers had to put in their own sewer and water. So how, you know, anyway, I think there's things we can figure out to help with that stuff, but I just wanna make sure we don't have, I mean, as you said, out-of-date Odin ordinances and codes, so let's make sure we're not getting in the way of this stuff happening.
And that's a beauty, y'all will be able to review all of those with us, and that's coming.
Yeah, I love, I love Beadbo and D R Horton, but I think every tenth home, they need to put in a park or something.
Oh, you're gonna love his concept, we have a very, we have two, very progressive and one more, so. Wherever you guys wanna go with that, we're open for it. Okay, so now I'm gonna jump to Stormwater. Stormwater, uh it's, we're dealing with managing the rainwater runoff to prevent flooding, pollution and protecting our environment. Um we make sure that we're compliant with T C Q as well. Um so this is where um it's very hard to get people to join that department. A lot of it is, has to do with salaries. Um and then they need to make sure that by the time that they've been here for a year, they need to have certain licenses. So it's very hard, sometimes I, we'll have, we'll get them, and then once they get their license, they they move to bigger cities. Um so we have a lot of work that they've been doing, they've been running this apartment mainly by just two people. Um and the there's, but I'll go, so pretty much they deal with um the current infrastructure, making sure that we're maintaining it, one that, and you'll all explain what we're planning to do in the future. We're um have, make sure that on construction, when they're doing construction sites, that they're making sure that they're applying for the right um applications. One of the biggest challenges that I have is that people don't want to just apply for these applications, and it's free. Um we have a couple of companies out there that we've charged zero dollars to fill out their application. But there's companies out there that are charging them over a thousand dollars and people aren't paying for it. And then they blame us and we're like, we're not the ones that are holding you back. Um that's the beauty about M G O, that everything's very transparent, it documents everything and it tells you how long uh item has been in the system and it notifies people if there's information missing. Can we improve? Absolutely. Um one of my goals is that, here's some of the data that they use. Um I do want to emphasize on the uh Stormwater sweepers. So Stormwater funds the sweepers, they, so we fund their um vehicles and their um employees, their salaries. Currently, there's only one. Um and a lot of it had to be because they needed a certain type of license. So we were in the process of switching out our, the vehicles for them. However, the person that oversees and manages that is under Public Works. So it's, and it, I think it creates kind of a headache because we're depending on them and their time in order to be able to um kind of post this, those salaries or know what is it that they need in order to get this. Um and so it might be easier to just move them over to us or just give them to Public Works, whatever works, whatever is easier. But it's part of our management plan, so we do need that data, and I do need people out there cleaning the streets. Um so one of our big projects that we're trying to do right now is because we're currently in a situation in where um our infrastructure everywhere is so old. Um we don't even know how this is, the, our Stormwater sewer looks like right now. So one of the projects that we're trying to do this year is go all the way. We currently are in one in where on Second Street, which is one of our lowest points, has collapsed and we're in the process of fixing that, and we actually have an easement in the house, there's a building that sits right on it. So the weight of the building is actually not helping that drainage. So we also, I don't know if you've heard, maybe a year ago, there were some kids going into the Stormwater manholes. We need to put locks on them. We need to put locks on them, um, so, that's also a, under priority. Uh, we also need some wash base, and, and the list goes on, and we have it budgeted, and we have it based on timing. It's flexible, whatever the priority is, we'll, yes.
Why did, why is it taking a year to lock the manholes?
Because we didn't have a funding for it. And so, we had to go and ask for it and put it into our budget this year, and now we, now that we do, and one of the other problems that we have is that we don't have the manpower to actually get things done, like the long term is kind of being put on hold because we're working with the current ones to get the applications up.
Is there like a padlock on the manhole?
No, there is a special one, and I can, she knows more, they're, they're, they have to be custom-made, and they have to have like a lock, like, kind of like those, the sewer ones have. It, it's a key that the city uses in order to lift them up.
Doesn't seem like it should take two years.
Well, I haven't been here two years, but this happened maybe not.
Well, it hadn't happened, and it still hadn't happened, and it's.
But yes, but you're correct, that's one of the things that we need to work on. Any other ones before I move on? Okay.
What do you do about the house built on the easement?
So, it's a building, so we're gonna, we're gonna line it, we're already having, it's one of the, uh, conferences that I have to bring to you, I think, went to the past, uh, council, but because we were new, I decided to just wait and bring it to you guys so you guys can see it. It's not gonna, it is important to get it done, but it's not like, gonna, us delaying a month is not gonna make a difference. So, the building's not gonna collapse.
Cause that's things that happen, this, the stormwater thing, I mean, it was brought up in planning zoning, and I think your answer was, well, we need to change our zone. I, I don't remember what it was, but when we were talking about something we were doing out by mission, and it was, well, what is this gonna do to affect the flooding? I think it was Jimmy Peacock asked me about the flooding down at, at eighty, and it's like, well, you know, y'all need to change the ordinance, change whatever it is. But, you know, we've got, I mean, if it rains any amount, it, up at Eighty-seventh and Three Eighty-five, it's underwater.
So, that's where it gets tricky with stormwater, we don't do the filter of it, we do the management of it, so that would fall under.
Yeah, but the, the planning and zoning of it, how did we allow twelve thousand houses to be built, and roads, and streets, and whatever? What, what did we do to plan for those houses, now that we've taken the grassland out to collect the water?
So, how they deal with it here is adding detentions or retention ponds.
But it's obviously not adequate, so what are we doing to?
Hundred percent.
Make sure that didn't happen again?
And we can incorporate it when we clean up the ordinance, but unfortunately, it falls under the engineering department, so I have to work with them in order to bring it in. And I, we have been with, um, Joe and, and Yorvam, they have been already in some initial talks.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go to, uh, opportunities then. So, we have gate bases, that means we can have new visions, we're right on the time in order to be able to start working on that. Um, we need to do a better job of educating the public. Um, we are in the process of updating all of our codes, and I mean all of our codes. So, um, one that you guys may have heard right before was updating our, um, building codes and our fire codes. Um, that's gonna be a challenge, but it's needed, because we have ISO ratings that we need to stay on, you know, concurrent. Um, by us not updating our codes, that means that whenever there's an emergency, based if it's a natural emergency, you might not help give any kinds of fundings. Um, or that means that insurance, since we'll give insurance to certain buildings. Um, and then we need to, you know, focus more also in the, um, limp work plane, and, um, I just need more staff too. Any other questions?
As we appreciate your presentation, your time today. I think you'd be in touch with multiple.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. I think time becoming the issue, so I think we're gonna have to table, uh, I don't know, eight, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, Mazur second.
Do we, do we, do we need to make a motion to table both of those?
Table nine and D.
I think so.
So, I'll make a motion to table items nine and ten.
I'll second it.
Council of Vasquez seconds, Paul, any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, everyone, thank y'all for attending. We'll be back shortly.